Alright, so it's seven o'clock on Monday, June 18th, 2018. I'll call the meeting to order and the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment of silent reflection. Alright, so prior to the meeting, we had our closed session and that was under section 239, 2B and D, and we have called items for the rise in report coming out of that. Kathy or Jennifer?
So there's a motion. Resolve that Omer's membership be offered to other than continuous full-time employees who are not required to join the Omer's plan as a condition of their employment.
I'm going to run second for that. Council McKinnon and Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. And is there another one? Is that the only one? Sorry, that was excellent. Okay, so we have one item we need to add on to our agenda and it's a report from our public works manager and it's, resolve the council accepts the additional staff report from the public works manager regarding the MTO underpass reconstruction on School Road. Council McKinnon and Council Sanders, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. So we have our minutes from our previous meeting and that was the June 4th, 2018 meeting. If you have a second or two to accept those minutes. Deputy Nurse Stockman and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Okay, so we have a couple items on our agenda that are timed events, so at 7:05 we have a public meeting for a zoning bylaw amendment and at 7:20 we have Fred and Gail Cahill here to speak about the speed reduction request on Melwood Drive. And then we also at 7:40 we have Edward L-
Yootsie.
Ah, Yootsie?
Just Yootsie.
Yootsie?
Yeah.
Okay. And Lori Canters and they're here to talk about the, discuss sidewalk insulation request on Center Road. So we'll move into our correspondence and the first section there is our upcoming conferences, seminars and meetings. So our next regular meetings are on Monday, July 9th, Monday, July 23rd and Monday, August 13th. The first item for correspondence is from the Middlesex Land and Paramedic Services and it's their invitation to their grand opening on June 21st, however it has been delayed or sked- what do we call it?
Postponed.
Postponed for unforeseen circumstances, so we'll get a new email regarding that, so. And when we get that out there, I'd recommend for council to attend, it's quite a facility that they have there, so. Item number two is from the County Middlesex and it's the Wardens Golf Tournament, if anyone's interested in attending.
I'll be going just for the meal and maybe giving a hand at not golfing.
Okay. If anybody else would like to attend, either talk to Jennifer or Kathy. Item number three is from the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority and it's the bus tour invitation and it's on June 28th, which is the same day as the Wardens Tournament. Item number four is from Four Counties Health Services and it's their annual golf tournament on July 13th, 2018. Item number five is from North Huron, it's the Bligh Festival and that's on July 19th, 2018.
Just a comment, that play was written by Mark Crawford from Blanco, Canadian Curly. So just for your information.
And then correspondence item number six is from the Strathrean District Chamber of Commerce and it's an event update. Okay, item number seven is from the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority and it's the conservation update for June. Item number eight is from the Ontario Aggregates Resources Corporation, it's their annual report.
I'm assuming the report was a large one?
Yes.
And do we have any land affected in that report?
It's a generic report for all of Ontario, so it doesn't specify by a certain property.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no questions at all in any of those correspondence, we have a motion to resolve the council receiving filed correspondence item CC1 to CC8. Council Sanders and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. So we'll move to our zoning bylaw amendments. So we need a motion to resolve at the public meeting to hear zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA 06 2018. 2941 Naperton Road be opened at 7:07 PM. Council McKinnon, Council Hendricks. All those in favor? Close and carried. So we have Melinda here, you want to take the seat in front? Yes. And I'm assuming you've received the planning report from Erin?
Yes.
Excellent. So... We, close it? I do, where is my little speaker? Just a second, I have a little note that I have to say so everyone understands what's going on. Alright, so the purpose of the following public hearing for the Adley Metap Council is to give the members of council as well as the general public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the application before council this evening. The public is advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record available for full disclosure. If a person or a public body files an appeal of decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal without having made a written submission to council, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township and a sign and sheet has been provided at your convenience, which is just on the table there in front of the hot seat, like you like to call it. So with that, I'll have Erin go through the report.
So the report before council this evening is offering favorable consideration to a zoning amendment application that the township has received from Matthew Baird on behalf of 1600978 Ontario Inc. The subject property is known municipally as 2941 Naperton Drive and is currently zoned agriculture and environmental protection. The application proposes to rezone a portion of the property from EP or environmental protection to agriculture to facilitate the construction of a greenhouse. The site contains an existing 1.8 hectare greenhouse used for the growing of cannabis and an empty barn that is sitting on a movable trailer. The township is in receipt of a preliminary site plan from the owner of the property which proposes to add 7.67 hectares expansion to the greenhouse, part of which is proposed to be built within the environmental protection zone. Also located on the site is a portion of the Currier's drain which is fully enclosed. Previously, this had been an open municipal drain which was regulated by the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority. The EP zone was applied to this area to mitigate potential risk of flooding and erosion by prohibiting development in this area. However, the drain is now enclosed, making the restrictive environmental protection zone essentially redundant. The proposed rezoning will remove a significant development constraint from the lands as no development is permitted within the environmental protection zone. The application was circulated to the necessary township staff as well as the related agencies including the conservation authority and no concerns were received. It is the opinion of planning staff that this zoning amendment is appropriate and I would recommend that the application be approved with the first and second reading of the implementing bylaw and the third and final reading to be given once site plan approval is, has been granted.
Okay, thank you Erin. Is there anything I'd add or any questions, Melinda? No, okay. Is there one, anyone in the public gallery wishing to speak to this application? Seeing none. Is there any questions or comments from council? Okay, with that, we need a motion then to resolve at the public meeting to hear zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA 06 2018. Be closed at 7:12 PM.
Go move.
Council Sanders and Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. We have the recommendation that was in front of us, which was for approval. Anybody would like to make that motion?
Stop it.
Council McKinnon? Council Hendricks? And that motion is, resolve the council approve the application for zoning bylaw amendment ZBA 06 2018 for 2941 Naperton Road to amend the zoning of the, of a portion of the subject lands from the environmental protection EP zone to agriculture A zone to facilitate the construction of a greenhouse and the council proceed with the first and second reading of the implementation bylaw and with the third and final reading be, to be provided once a deposit of reference plan has been received to the satisfaction of the township. Okay, so that's been moved and seconded? Nope. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Thank you. Thank you, thank you Erin. So we're gonna hop into our staff reports. And our first one is from our chief building official, Jeff.
Yeah, just got the permits issued from April 12th to June 18th.
Is there any questions at all on the permit list?
Just do it.
Questions?
I was just going to ask if I needed to declare a conflict because I see there's a relative on my, on the list.
I don't think so, but it's up to you. Okay, is there any other questions at all for the permit list?
Not on the permit list of this report.
Other than the overall?
The overall summary?
Okay.
Under two residential building permits? Was it, they were each valued at $295?
Probably the one I probably didn't enter the construction value in on there, I was set after, like sometimes if I didn't put the value in, I may not have entered it into the permit, so the-
It looks like, I thought whole.
Yeah, that's probably just the one.
First building houses.
Probably, yeah, there was no value, so, yeah, I didn't provide an estimated value of construction on the permit.
Okay, that explains why it's so high.
Okay. Is there anything else? Seeing none. Need a motion to resolve the council accepts the government permit issued report that submitted by the chief building official.
Stop it.
Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. It looks like we're doing the public works. The next one will be our public works manager's report, Jeff.
Okay.
Jeff, please. Yeah. Sorry.
This report came a little quick, quickly on the radar. As we're aware of a previous report, the Ministry of Transportation is rebuilding, reconstructing the underpasses along the 42 and School Road is scheduled, was scheduled to be closed August the 8th to have work done to it. They have requested through email as of late Friday that they would like to move that up to July 3rd. I think their, all their, their underpasses are ahead of, ahead of schedule. To, to get this done, we've asked that they give two weeks notice to the landowners and to the, to posting signs. So we, they've kind of keep not giving us a whole bunch of lead time there, but, but basically today is the two week to start that. So the report here in front of you is just to ask council to consider a request that they are allowed to close School Road for a, for a period of a couple of months, so.
Council Hendricks?
I, I think it's probably a good thing that they're moving it up if it needs to be closed for two months because that's a pretty major school bus, right? So I think it's good that they can get that done ahead of time.
Mr. Mayor, I agree also, I, it's nice to see them move it up, so.
Okay, would you like to move on?
Go on, move that.
Okay, Council Hendricks, and the second by Council Sanders. There's no more discussion, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Is there anything else? Jeff?
I just like to do a little verbal update on all the activities. Very quickly, dust control is done. We are over halfway completed on the maintenance gravel as of this week, as hopefully by the Friday we'll have that completed. Roads that were over halfway done on roadside grass trimming. We're over halfway done on the bridge trimming. The new tandem has arrived and the sixth update I wanted to talk about, bring up was the east side of the Kerrwood-Langdon intersection, so Kerrwood Road and Langdon to the north. We had a blowout on the pavement there. As you come down the hill to the stop sign, a large section of the road moved on us, actually pushed right out. I believe, in my opinion, the reclaimed asphalt that we use underneath it couldn't handle the large trucks coming down to the stop sign and when they applied the brakes, it shifted on us. I have a company that's gonna start tomorrow and we're gonna fix that intersection up and pave it, so that it has a stronger surface for the trucks to stop at, so. That's what's happening up at Langdon and Kerrwood, that intersection there, so. It's, it's quite a massive, I don't know if you've been up.
Yeah, I saw it last year.
Yeah, so that's what's gonna, the repair should be done this week, so by, again, by Friday that intersection should be paved and back to normal, so.
Council Hendricks?
Was any of the stress of that road caused by the amount of pumping they did in that creek last summer?
I'm unaware, I'm unaware of that and no one's mentioned that to me, that's the first I've heard of that.
I think that's where the creek goes through, where they had the spill last year and they were pumping out of that. I don't know if that affected the sort of the-
There was, I know for sure, Mr. Mayor, that when I arrived last fall, we had to patch up a small tear in the asphalt at this point and we spray patched it up and sealed it all back up. Thinking we're gonna try and see if it held and then all of a sudden, about two weeks ago it let go a large portion. So I'm not sure exactly if that was the cause or whether it's just the general traffic coming down the hill to the stop signs, so.
Well, it is the main route for all those new gravel trucks coming out of the, the new pit there on Langdon.
Council Sanders?
So do we have to dig that all out again and start over or?
No, I think the base is actually really, we were talking about that, we examined the base underneath. There's a two-inch lift of reclaimed asphalt which we, which we form into almost like a reclaimed pavement. Underneath, there's not a stone moved.
So it'll be hot pavement we're gonna use this stuff?
We're gonna use hot pavement and hopefully that-
So are we looking at a huge expense or is that in the budget or do we have that as a surplus or?
It'll go under the patching, the hardtop patching budget and the cost is right now a little less than $15,000. That's, that's complete, that's the removing of the old and installation of the new.
Okay. Any other questions at all? Deputy Nurse Stockman?
So that's on the east side, we're talking gravel, that's on the west side though, isn't it?
It is, but the trucks sometimes come right through there.
Oh, okay. And the main tear, Mr. Mayor, seems to be in the lane where the trucks are applying the brakes.
So how far will you go back from car number 6?
It's about 110 feet.
Yeah.
So just to the top of the hill, just as the cresting that hill, trying to put in a little more support there as, as the shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, something similar a number of years ago on the 10th concession of Care Dock down to, was it 16th side road? Trucks coming from Gardville at the time and it got to be a major washboard because it was just pushing.
There's, I agree, there's another location we're keeping an eye on, Melwood, Melwood west of Kerrwood. There's a small tear in the road there also that we're gonna have to, again, it's a truck, truck area. Worry about Langdon, get the road safe.
Yep, do it right, then you're done.
Just, so just for clarification, so it's on the east side?
It's on the east side.
And the majority of the trucks I'm assuming are coming, going to or from the gravel pit which is on the west?
On the west side, yeah.
Do we not, was there a site plan or an agreement at all with the gravel pit to have it so they have a truck route? And can we not have it so then they stay, so when they go down Langdon, they go onto Kerrwood? Which is a county road which would be?
Be, yes, leaving, leaving the pit, I believe that's not the problem, it's the empty trucks coming to the pit.
Yeah.
We can look at, we can look at that and see what's, what's happening up there, but at this point I'm not sure exactly if it's, I mean, pit's in the area, so it's, it, it, it's something to maybe look at. We'll see what, I mean, I hate, I, you know, going further would be to, to remove all trucks on, on that portion of Langdon would be a-
Yeah, but it's hard to-
There's livestock farms there.
I know, that's pretty tough to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Deputy Nurse Stockman, you're gonna say something?
To further on what you were talking about Curtis, I do think when they applied for that, that pit and the hard surface was put on Langdon west of Kerrwood. I don't know if it was written in any agreement or not, but I do think there was suggestion that they stay on, on those parts and that they come from Kerrwood to there as opposed to coming from either the west or coming from the east on the shortcut.
Yep, right. But so actually, you know, we could maybe, how many farms is on that little piece? We're only talking what, two, three kilometers?
Yeah, it's not that long.
So they could go down, you know, let's say that, and go on County Road 6 and avoid that shortcut. Could be something we could look at. For all the big trucks, I mean, if it's that big of an issue, then, you know, I mean, whether they take the little shortcut, go down, turn, you know? We could say, you know? It's possible, but you do, one, you gotta do with maybe more, but.
And that's, Mr. Mayor, the hard part is policing, enforcing. And, and to try and pick and choose which trucks can go down Langdon is the tough part for the enforcement party. We can, we can maybe, I can maybe mention to the pit operations to, to remind drivers that they are not to be using Langdon, that they are to be using Kerrwood as their access point to, to Langdon. The hard part is again, is policing, policing that, there's-
Oh, wow, would that be, yeah. I don't want her to mention it to them and ask politely, I guess, to see what happens, so.
I have to go up there to see about some material, so.
Yep, no, you gotta nerd.
Okay, is there anything else at all?
Nope.
Nope. So, gonna add in a motion here which is to accept, receive, kind of pull up and figure it out.
Resolve that council accepts the verbal report of the public works manager as presented.
Council Sanders and Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Okay, we're gonna go into our first delegation that we have, which was scheduled for 7:20, we have Fred Cahill here and it's in regards to the speed reduction request on Melwood Drive.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Didn't realize I was first on the list, but. Yeah, my request is pretty simple, I'd like to know if I could get the speed limit reduced from Greg Jaikman, which is to the east of me, to the stop sign, maybe even past Gerald. I'm not sure how far we wanna go with that, but I'd like to get it reduced because we, my biggest issue is safety. To get to the other side of the range, I have to go on the road, down about 100 yards and then back in and we're on it for five minutes, that's the extent of it. But we have an issue with people coming over the ridge, they don't see us until they get on top of us. I know they wanna slow down anyway, they've gotta stop, but it's just a matter of educating them. They're kinda like cows, you gotta herd them, I guess, but just a matter of getting the message across so that they can slow down. They gotta stop anyway, you know, it's just a matter, so they're gonna lose a mint. We had an issue with a bus last week, came over the ridge and anyway, someone went to the school and they just fixed that, like, they just changed the route, pretty simple. When you're dealing with safety, it's, it's priority for everybody. They felt that way and they were good about it. For me, it's the same thing, I don't wanna be on the road, it's just something, can't afford to build a bridge, I'm not sure I can get the environmental issues. I'm thinking maybe growing cannabis, so. Not sure I need a greenhouse, I think you can grow that without it, eh?
Well, I'd probably grow a lot.
You know, tinsing some razor wire. But that's, that's my goal and that's, that's what I'm asking for. Whatever you can do, I'd appreciate it and, thank you.
Thank you, is there any questions or comments at all for Fred?
Yeah, one que- first question, do we, we have a sign that says horses?
We got the horses, we gotta slow down, there's deer on the road, yeah, that's at the top end.
Okay. So then, maybe our clerk could explain what the procedure is to get the slow, you know, to move the vehicles slower on your road because there's probably one request there, there might be another request over here, another request over there. So we have to deal with each one, we say, yeah, Fred, no problem, we'll put a 33-litre sign up there, but then tomorrow morning there might be somebody else, so. Maybe someone here that's a little brighter and I'm gonna explain this procedure or what else to happen.
If I may?
Yes, there a process to this?
We do have your letter from last year and we have been looking at it, we do need to develop a bylaw which will help to establish what our, number one, what our criteria is for reviewing the roads. Our public works manager has been going, going to be going through and determining what is our top priorities and what areas need to be looked at to make sure that we universally apply a bylaw that's acceptable to all. So we will, we haven't forgotten about your request and we're going to be working on it and, and work towards getting some resolution for you and see if we can't come up with a limit that would help alleviate the problems there.
Well, whatever you can do to speed this process up, I would be greatly appreciated because sometimes my heart goes right into my stomach when I see them coming over there. And you know, they've gotta stop anyway. And as much as I can say, well, maybe it's me and it's, you know, it is what it is, but sometimes you have to make some decisions that doesn't involve anybody else, it's just, it's an isolated case, but it's just a matter of me staying in business or not.
Right, yeah, and we can appreciate that, but also, also a consideration will be the enforcement of it and how we're going to enforce it. Because we will have to rely on the Sheriff's Provincial Police to do the enforcement of that. So how often and how many times they'll get out there and, and how that's going to dovetail into our bylaw will have to be considered as well.
Yeah, I know enforcement's gonna be an issue because it's just the way it is, there's not enough cops around, I get that. But whatever you can do to kind of help me out here, I would appreciate it. Not that I'm gonna enforce it, I'm not gonna. Anyway, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
I hope we have another question, Fred? I think Deputy Nurse Stockman, question or comment?
Yes, okay. What distance are you looking at and what speed limit are you looking at?
I love those two questions, the distance would be from Greg Jaikman would be, I'm gonna, I can measure it.
Yeah, quarter of a mile.
Quarter of a mile, and they're gonna, remember, they're stopping anyway. We just need to remind them that they got stopped.
Well, it's on, a little bit on your, on your, well, east side of that bridge.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it wouldn't be anymore.
No. No, you go through Aldiston and it's, it's down to fifty. I'm not saying we're Aldiston or whatever, but it's, it's a kind of, there's, there's some, you know, there's houses on that road with kids in it. You go through Adelaide Village here, it's sixty.
Yep.
But there's no stop sign here, so you don't have to stop, right? But I'm thinking if we can, why don't we get them slowed down sooner, I mean, hey, everybody's in such a rush today, we all know.
I know, I realize.
And it's, uh, it's just the way it is, but I think, uh, I think they, they wanna know, they want us, if we can warn them, they probably appreciate it. Because, uh, they don't wanna pile up my horses and everybody likes to slow down and see them, actually, we get, it's more of a tourist than anything.
But, 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 but they're not reacting to the horse sign.
They're not reacting to the horse sign, that's, yeah, they're not, they're not grasping the concept, I guess, or, or they're not, they're getting, they're on top, I mean, before they know it, and I think.
The sign isn't big enough, Fred?
I know it should be.
And you're a lot, I think even, the townspeople would even argue with you, if you made a sign that's from here to Jim White and Dad High with a big horse on and foot on the bottom, please slow down, horses ahead, it might help.
You know, I.
But make it big enough.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the next time if you don't listen, then just sit beside it on a chair.
Now, that's what I'm thinking of doing.
But, you know, but, 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 even if you said fifty kilometers an hour on top of the hill, is it gonna solve the problem unless, no, if you sent right beside the sign, they probably won't slow down.
No, they probably won't slow down, but if I bought a cop car and put it on the side of the road there, which is kinda what I gotta do next anyway.
But anyway, no, I, just a suggestion.
No, yeah.
Maybe a bigger sign, and maybe, you know, on the bottom, a right, please, you know, there's horses.
Pretty please.
That little horse sign, I, I see it once in a while, I'm probably no better than anybody else, I probably drive the fastest girl to do, don't see any horses.
No, I.
At night, I slow down at thirty, because there's a hundred deer on that corner, so I don't want any deer, but it's just a suggestion.
No, and that's a great.
And we're certainly gonna look at it.
Yep, no, and you know what, these are all, I'm open to any suggestions we got, and I.
But maybe it would help, I mean, I'll even help you make it up, if you give me a cold beer, I'll gladly help you. But, and this is gonna take a little bit of time, and I mean, and I know you could have said, okay, I waited a year already, and here we go again. And that's probably true, and I, I feel exactly how, no, exactly how you feel, but I got a feeling if you made a bigger sign, an under, please slow down, it might help, fifty kilometer sign might help, not a lot, unless there's a cop car sitting beside it. So, you know, I'm certainly willing to help you out, I'll try anything we can, and we will move on this, I guarantee it. But for the time being, let's try it, and we'll see what we can do for you.
That'd be great, yeah, I knew that you can do, I appreciate it. And I'm not upset that it's been a year, I actually have forgotten that I wasn't here a year.
Time flies, eh?
Sure does, having fun.
Uh, we're gonna get a motion from council, and it's, uh, resolve the council direct staff to investigate and report back to council regarding the speed limit reduction request from Melwood Drive. Council McKinnon and Deputy Stockman, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Thank you all, appreciate it, will I have to sign this?
No.
You're not that important.
Have a good day, everyone, thank you very much.
Okay, so hop back into our staff reports, for the next delegation is at seven forty, and the next one is from our C A O, nope, it's from our clerk, Jennifer.
Thanks, Mayor Smith, um, the report that I have here is not for any decisions for council to make to main, it's based on our employee code of conduct. Um, our current version is from two thousand and fourteen, and we've had a lot of changes with the municipal act, so, um, it's been felt that a newer version of the employee code of conduct policy to hopefully fall in suit with the council code of conduct. Um, the current version that we have is in second person, so it's in, um, it uses pronouns you, your, and yours to address the readers directly, and in order to keep it consistent with the rest of our policies, we like to remove the second person. Um, and, uh, we've provided more guidelines that help explain the sections. Um, and we've taken out members of council, for whatever reason, the current one that we have talks about council members and employees. So now that we have a council code of conduct, we'd like to just remove all the council that's in the employee one and have one that's strictly for staff and volunteers of the municipality. So the, uh, recommendation that I have is that council review the updated draft employee code of conduct and that any changes, revisions, clarifications be submitted and reviewed at the July ninth, uh, two thousand and eighteen, regular council meeting.
One second there for that, Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, is there any discussion at all?
Yes, um, under the process, um, the application complaint process, um, you had, um, that it would only be given to council on an annual basis, and I don't really think that's right. I think we should be aware of any complaints and how they're dealt with before the actual, uh, dealing is, is completed. So we don't get into problems where we're hiring solicitors. It's, um, did you find it, Jennifer?
Page thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen of eighteen is on our, uh, iPad, and, um,
so if a complaint, I just, just for clarification, if a complaint come in, you'd rather it come to council to get direction instead of going to the C A O?
If it's serious, if it's serious, because then we go down into the clerk's department and, um, or the interpretation, I'm sorry. And we have a verbal or written warning, suspension with or with no pay and or dismissal, and I think council should be aware of that before that happens.
Um, okay, that would, I guess there would be a discipline policy that we would have to work off of, which we currently don't have one, but I know Kathy's been working on H R policies. So that would be part of the H R policy, and if a complaint was to come in, say to myself, it's not something I can do by myself, it's something I'd have to consult with Kathy anyways, and then ask to go through our discipline policy.
Yeah, I can see a discipline, uh, policy kind of tying in with this, yes.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I just felt annually wasn't enough, that we should be aware of serious, uh, you know, disciplinary problems before a year's up.
I can change that to monthly or bi-yearly or however council.
I think it should even be monthly.
Whatever, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, oh, it's, sure, it should be dealt with immediately.
Yep. Yep.
Couple of things, uh, on a quick read through, uh, on the paper version, page eight to seventeen, that's the public trust of the bullet points. Uh, that goes back to second person, the way it was wrote, or written, sorry. 'Cause they're talking about our working hours and, uh, our job and that, that's the bullet points, uh, in public trust. Page eight of seventeen on, on my copy.
Yeah, it's nine of eighteen, I'm not like that.
And then on, uh, twelve of seventeen and thirteen of seventeen, uh, the appli- application, the complaint process, in, in that section, it's all public, but in the interpretation right at the bottom of that, just before we get into enforcement, uh, all complaints against staff or personnel matters about an identifiable individual, they will be kept confidential. So those two are, it's gonna be fully public, but it's also confidential, so somewhere, that doesn't seem to work. Probably just needs to be looked at again. And I realize that, that the complaint process needs to have names and that and, and all that information there to validate, uh, the complaint process as far as the complainant. But we're talking that it's about an identifiable individual, and then once that is in, then it's a, uh, privacy issue. Maybe I'm reading too much into it.
I'll, uh, take a look at it and I'll sit down with, um, Kathy and we'll go over it.
That's all I have right now. Oh, and, and related to that as well, on the actual formal complaint, uh, letter, it does say the, insert the name of the employee, so, once again, the privacy issue. Uh, no, um, number two, I have reasonable and probable grounds to believe that, et cetera.
Okay, so Jennifer will look into those, and then that'll be part of the discussion out of next meeting. And that was, the, uh, motion was already moved and seconded by Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, so if there's nothing else, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Is there anything else, Jennifer?
Oh, I have nothing.
Okay, so let's hop into our last delegation, and that was scheduled for seven forty, and we have Edward and Laura here, and it's the sidewalk installation request on Central Road. Alright, so welcome, council hasn't received anything, so the floor is always, all yours and.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to present this issue to you. Uh, we have with us a, a petition that we took up, uh, from residents along Second, uh, Center Road and Charles Boulevard intersecting with that road. And it's basically asking for a sidewalk to be placed, uh, along Center Road, uh, between Pan Lane and Center Street. Because there are sidewalks at Pan Lane and sidewalks on Second Street. We have put together some discussion points to, uh, try and walk you through this thing at that, I'll leave the, the documents with the, with the. To start with, uh, if we just look at the, at the people side of things, and there are people walking today on Center, on Center Road, on either side, just about any time of the day, um, and that number is increasing. We have people that walk to work, I'm not sure whether they work in businesses along the Center Road or if they're walking up to, to Second Street. But you can see they're in their work clothes and, and they're at work. We have joggers that are out for exercise, obviously, and they're running, usually up to where they can get back on the sidewalk and get around. Gasoline is at the price it was in two thousand and eight, uh, when we, uh, had a recession. And it's expensive to drive cars, and some people are, can't afford to drive them for short trips, others just won't drive them for short trips. And so there's going to be more and more people that will be walking. People are walking more to improve their overall health, uh, everybody's out for a little exercise, and the, uh, it's even, uh, talked about today that, that walking is a good defense against dementia, so we all need to take those steps. We have, uh, people are walking to help the environment, another reason for not taking the car on these short kind of trips. There are some disabled people who don't have a choice, either they are allowed to drive or can't drive, uh, and they have to go somewhere, so they, they end up either have a walk, or in my case, I, I take my wheelchair when I'm just by myself. There are, uh, if we look at our aging population, people will end up relying more on walking to do errands rather than bother their families or friends for rides, so, other reason. I've personally been riding my chair on that road, uh, since two thousand and ten. If I'm going by myself somewhere, my life's not around, or it takes two of us to go in a vehicle, but, uh, so it, uh, and a, a point that I make is it's, the situation's worsened since the roadwork has been done, we'll talk about that in a little bit here. Women have been seen pushing strollers and struggling in the, in the loose gravel on the shoulder. And, uh, they're obviously reluctant to be on the pavement, especially on the east side of the road. Cyclists are also having a difficult time trying to ride on the shoulder, the sense of roadwork has been done on the shoulders, you're really, uh, not backed and, and a little bit dangerous, so. So that's the reasons why we're seeing more and more people. Before the road, roadwork was done on the Center Road, uh, the gravel shoulders were fairly wide, they were fairly densely packed, a lot of traffic on over the years. And you could, you could walk or ride wheelchair bicycle on them, when there were trucks or cars coming by, you could get over quite a ways from the edge of the road. And, uh, if it was, it rained recently, there'd be puddles, and people would have to walk around them, or wheelchair could get stuck in them, you'd have to go around them. Basically, it was easier to do if you saw the road. Today, uh, the road traffic is increasing, I'm sure that's why some of that work was done, and there's more development happening and what people coming into the trafficway. So there's, uh, more and more traffic on that road. It's not uncommon to sit for ten or fifteen minutes trying to get out onto the road, if you're trying to come off of a side street or out of one anyways. Since the, what, the road has been, uh, repaved, there's a wide paved shoulder on the west side of the road. But you often see cars driving on it, because there never any signs posted, people don't know that that's a shoulder, uh, it's a solid line. Not supposed to be driving on it, but they do. So it's dangerous to assume you're safe to walk on it or ride. The gravel shoulders are narrow, they're angled away from the road, you get a little water, obviously. They haven't been compacted, so they're loose, and I liken, uh, walk, trying to walk on stones to, like walking on marbles, eh? Not very, very safe. Wheelchair would easily, easily get stuck in it, I've tried it. Call a tow truck, yeah. The, there's a serious place, uh, opposite Charles Road, where if someone stops to turn onto Charles off of Center Road going north, the traffic will back up, and you can get two or three cars, because, you know, there's a fair amount of traffic at the way to it. And people will just pull out onto the shoulder and pass without slowing down, and just whip over there. And some of the walking on that shoulder when that happens, they're, A, it's hard to stop on it, 'cause fresh gravel still, and B, it's, you know, the drivers don't see them, so there's a real issue with that. The paved shoulder disappears about, um, a hundred and fifty feet or so back of Pan Lane, or north of Pan Lane. And that's to create the turning lane at that panel, and so if you're walking there, there's, there's virtually no place to go. The curve is, is, there is a, a ramp up and down, but the centerpiece is really rough and high. Not, I wouldn't recommend anybody walk on it or try to drive on it, and you're most of the way past that corner to even get to that, so once we get to that point, you're side by side with the cars that are, that are turning. The, uh, and like I say, wheelchair access to that corner is useless, so it's just not usable. Uh, if we look at the development along the Center Road, uh, how they. Uh, if we look at development along the Center Road, uh, how they've met capped promoting development along that road. And that's a good thing for the econ, for the economy of the township. Businesses have, that have located, need all the customers they can get, and, uh, for their, to be successful as a business and as employers. And the sidewalks would help them attract more customers and help them present a more successful image. Uh, the residential density in this area is a, is approximating an urban level. Where we normally expect to have sidewalks and street lamps and things like that. And of course, it's just a question of when, uh, the development will turn to apartments or condos along that road. In which case, it'd be a lot more pedestrians. Certainly, there'd be a lot more traffic. We have contact, contacted Sam McFarren. He's the accessibility coordinator at Melsex County. And we were asking him if he was aware of any funding that could be available for, for this. And he did say that he didn't have anything, province or countywide, but he said he was sending information to you folks to, uh, uh, show some opportunities for some, that there may be some funding available from a federal level. And, and we did talk to Greg McClinsey, the C O, or sorry, the C O for Strathroy, Care Doc. And he has indicated that some arrangement for cleaning the snow from a sidewalk, if it was created, could be arranged. Because they're cleaning right up to Panel Lane and they, they clean Second Street, so. So in conclusion, I think, uh, what we want to leave you with is that the number of people walking on this road is increasing for many reasons. It's currently not a very safe place to walk, and most people would choose not to if there was another alternative. The township should be more proactive and solve this problem before someone is seriously hurt. Uh, the township is developing retail business along Center Road. They need to include provisions for vesting in the streets. And the vehicular traffic on Center Road needs to be educated. They need signings or something to say about both shoulders and not passing up the gravel, those kind of things before it's a real serious thing. Of course, we all know that when lawyers are looking for somebody to blame, they're, they're looking for deep pockets, so everybody is a target. And the, uh, the other last point to make is the problems we've talked about in our summertime and the wintertime, they, they get far, far worse. Plow leaves, the mess along the shoulder, it's rough, it's icy, it's wet. And even, even onto the road sometimes, so, uh, that's the situation of the people walking.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else to like to add, Lori?
No, I think we have about thirty-five signatures, almost every resident.
Actually forty-two.
Forty-two, sorry. Uh, we, we petitioned all the neighbors that the businesses along the way, and most people were definitely in favor of this.
And with that petition, did you make a copy of it all, just so that?
We have, uh, two copies for you, one original and, and one copy, and along with the discussion points, just so you've got that.
Okay, perfect. Uh, is there any questions at all? Jeff, uh, I don't know if you've got that. Is there any questions at all from council? Councilor McKinnon?
Um, given your situation, um, would you be stuck on a sidewalk? Or would a continuous sort of a walkway be better?
I think, I think anything that's separate from vehicles, uh, should be fine. I mean, if, if the vehicle can just pull over onto it, then that's, it's probably not any safer than, than what people are on. It'd be pretty scary, I mean, you, if you're walking, you have to have a, your head turned behind you all the time. It doesn't matter which side of the road you're on, I've tried both, so.
Uh, Councilor Hendricks?
Um, yeah, I, I drive into town all, that way all the time, and I certainly can understand. I'm always amazed at the people I see jogging along there, thinking, oh, they got a safer place, and, and.
They're trying to get to a safer place.
I, and the widening up the pavement, for the most part, has been used as a, the middle of the highway is used for a turning lane because it's impossible otherwise to turn left into Laramie-Domins and Home Hardware and all those places, so.
It's not marked that way.
No, it's, it's not marked at all, and.
It's got a solid line, so it's, it's a, it's a paved shoulder.
Yeah, so, um, but I, I certainly understand. I was just looking, because I know we've looked at the budget costs of sidewalks, and there's that huge ditch.
Yeah, there's a.
Which is a, which is, um.
A better challenge.
Uh, it's quite a massive capital cost to get over that, so.
I, I don't, I, I think it only needs to be on the one side of the road.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't need to be on both sides, uh.
Councilor McKinnon?
And, uh, to Mayor Curtis, possibly you could take this back to county council, um, suggesting better signage for their shoulders, the paved shoulders, and hopefully.
At least, at least the people understand what they are.
Yes, yes.
So, uh, that's actually one thing I was going to mention, is the, so eighty-one on Center Road there, it's not completed yet. So there'll be a final, um, I believe there'll be a final, uh, paving on that coat. Um, and then it'll, it's, the reason for the widening is for the third lane, for the left turn lane. So once that's completed, then it'll be marked clearly with the, the two lanes of traffic and then the turning lane in the middle, so.
Once, once that, that's not available to walk on, then you're on this much loose gravel shoulder with, with an angle on it, so.
Deputy Stockman?
Uh, it's my understanding that when a municipality puts a sidewalk in, the standards for maintenance in the wintertime are exactly the same as maintenance for, for roadways. So, is that correct, Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, yes, um, that's correct. Now, the new municipal maintenance standards that just came out, uh, a sidewalk is considered a roadway. It has to be maintained at the same standard.
So you did mention that you talked to Strathroy Care Doc, and they would clean it? Because that would be, that would be one of my.
It, I'm sure it's not free, but they would do it. They don't do anything free, as, as you know, yeah, you don't rely, it's, uh, but they would, they're going that way anyways, so they, they could just finish it up and go around the corner.
Additional question for, for Kathy. Could this be considered quote unquote, an area improvement? So if the costs would proportionately go more to that area than to the whole municipality?
Yes, and they'd be charged back to the property owners through the local community charge.
We've had a taste of that. And, uh, I mean, you, you folks are billing the businesses, and billing your tax base with that, and you're continuing. How, how do those businesses get people there, I don't know. I know we talk in loose terms about highway commercial, but that is changing all the time. What people think is, is highway commercial is changing. But, uh, anywhere else there's development going on like that, the, uh, there are sidewalks.
Anything else? And, and just a final suggestion, I guess, would be for, uh, well, number one, the budget has been set for this year. I would suggest that, uh, Jeff and, and staff take a look at what the actual costs would be to complete that section that you're requesting. And then as well, to take a look at, you know, what are other areas of the township? Because I'm sure if we put a sidewalk there, there's going to be other areas that'll request the same thing.
There, there may be, wherever you've got development going on and people are walking, I mean, I, I'm posted, most of the roads in the township, when people walk along, there's either not very many cars on that road, or not very many people walking, but, uh, this is a different case, because you've got kids that walk to and from the high school, you've got people going to work, you've got all kinds of things. And it's really not a good way. Head Street has good sidewalks, and meet up with Second Street, but you can't get over from Head Street safely on any of the roadways that come across. They're, they're narrow and they're hilly, and the cars can't see, and there's, there's no sidewalks, and probably no room for sidewalks. It's a, it's an issue.
Councilor McKinnon?
One other thing, the, the county had proposed a bike pass. And was Center Road one of those that were chosen as a bike, to look at bike pass?
Uh, so the county cycling plan hasn't been brought forward to county council yet, so we haven't seen what that is. But it will be coming to county council in the, I think it'll be due in the next couple months.
Okay, so maybe that could be incorporated onto Center Road as well?
I'm sure the cyclists would appreciate it, and to, uh, just like the, the paved shoulder, the motors aren't giving them the four feet they're supposed to have.
So, uh, how, how, how long a distance would it be, Nick, you have any idea?
That would be one, one full township block.
Yeah, it's Panel, Panel Lane to Second Street, it's a township block.
No, no, it would, sorry, it wouldn't be a full township block, because that'd be in Napperton. But, uh.
Kilometer?
Probably more than that.
I don't know if it's a lot more, it's three kilometers from my house to the school on, uh, Second Street, so it'd be a.
Uh, it wouldn't be a lot.
Maybe a kilometer or better, not more than that.
I was going to look it up, but nobody else is talking, so, anything else?
No, I think it's, I think you've certainly got to look at it. It's one area that does, I was there today, I was at the Ronus, and there is a lot of traffic on that road anymore. A lot. So, you know, I mean, we talked about sidewalks for several years, and like Nick says, there'll be, that one'll want one, they want one, those want one, but, you know, I can see this area and another one on Napperton, a little area that I would certainly look at. But once you open sidewalks for people, then, you know, one is for all, all of a sudden. And I realize this is very important. I, I do totally agree with you, if it's anywhere it needs it, it's there.
If we think about what the lawyers might value human life at, or.
No, no, I, I, I understand it, I, no, no, I don't disagree with you.
It's sometimes a lesser evil, but, uh.
No, I agree.
So the distance from, on Center Road from Panel to Second Street is one point four kilometers.
Okay. Pretty one, uh.
So, if I could just say a few things about this. I agree with, with what you're saying. Um, I think council would agree, for the last number of years, uh, during budget time, I had brought up the, uh, the idea of sidewalks, and not only on, on Center Road, but in other areas of, of the township. And Gerald's right, um, in saying that if we're going to be looking at sidewalks, say even just that short distance from Panel just to Charles, uh, we have to be looking at, at other areas as well, going all the way to Second Street. And also, um, another area would be getting a sidewalk going out to Buttry Creek, and that subdivision there, um, on Pike and Napperton area, and, and getting all those, um, connecting areas, so then people aren't walking in the road and getting them on sidewalks, and then they can go into, into town. And I believe you're right, I had a similar conversation with, uh, Strathroy Care Doc, who was Ralph Coe at the time, saying that most likely they would, um, have some kind of agreement with me, with, with us, to have the sidewalks, um, the snow removed and all that kind of thing in, in the wintertime. But, uh, as of right now, council, uh, we already have the budget approved for twenty eighteen. Um, so, that obviously won't be, it would be, wouldn't be happening this year. Um, but what we did have in twenty seventeen, and our approved budget was ten thousand dollars for engineering costs of sidewalks, and that, I believe, was transferred over to twenty eighteen, is that right, Kathy?
No, it was not.
Okay, it was not. So, it's now just in our surplus, so that was brought up by council, so that's the thing, is that, um, most likely, it would be, have to be looked at next year during the budget process, but.
Hopefully, you can get it into your budget discussions.
Yeah.
Start taking a look at, uh, to say that the traffic increase is almost daily. And the number of people walking is, is really increasing.
Okay, so, I must move up a motion of any sort from the council of what we would like to, or just taken under advisement for next year?
I, I think it'd be worthwhile to, uh, to have staff put some dollar figures to, you know, per, per kilometer or whatever kind of thing, so that we can have some time to actually think about, you know, do we want to go?
Unfortunately, the gully makes it difficult, because you're going to need to build a bridge, or, uh, retaining walls to pack it up, or something, uh, supportive.
Do you want to have, uh, motions in the back, or?
Yeah, I, I, I'll move that, uh, staff, uh, look into this further to provide, uh, an idea of potential costs for not only this area, but also, uh, other areas of the township, updated costs.
Okay, so that's moved by Deputy Stockman and Seckendorf. Councilor Hendricks, any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed and not scared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's move back into our staff reports. Uh, we're going to the staff reports, next one is from C O, Ted, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, the first report is the account approval listing for the period May thirty-first to June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
Is there any questions on the accounts? Councilor Hendricks?
Yeah, it's not a huge amount or anything, but I see under, um, council, there's like forty-seven dollars for a official handbook or election and office handbook. And under admin, it's like a hundred and sixteen dollars.
Yeah, we purchased an election manual, that's under the actual election account, it, for whatever reason, it was put under the council budget portion. So that's for an election manual to have in the office available. And the other ones are for various other handbooks that, um, we've decided. We have a new, up-to-date municipal act, as well as a conflict of interest act, if anyone ever is looking for something to read.
Councilor McKinnon?
Uh, page seventeen of nineteen, it's, um, under, uh, zero, zero, six, six, four, oh, eighty-two, ninety. And there was part paving stones, tubing for light standard, and part landscape, and part chip and dust. I just wondered if that was getting it ready for the, um, Optimus Ball tournament?
Yes, the, uh, paper stones, the landscape product and the chip and dust was to, uh, from the bleachers up, uh, replace the, they dug out underneath the, all of the bleachers, replaced it with fabric, and they put the, the chips down. And then in front of the dugout on the, uh, main diamond on the west side, they put it right up to the diamond. They got rid of all the weeds and stuff that was thrown in there. And as well, the back diamond was repaired, and they, uh, took out all of the weeds and ashes, lifted all of the, uh, bleachers out, did the same thing underneath, filled it all with stone dust, and replaced the benches for the, um, ball players as well.
Was that through our staff, or was that through?
That was all done by the public work staff, and they did an awesome job. And then we also replaced the tubing, was for the light standard in the outfield. It hadn't been replaced for quite a few years, it was pretty well, it was pretty cracked and dangerous. So we, um, put new stuff up for the tournament, so no one would get hurt, so.
Good, thank you.
Is there any other questions?
I've got one, for Jeff. The, the pickup truck, air condition, it's a two thousand and sixteen.
Yep.
Is there no warning on that anymore, or, no, I just wonder, because it depends on how many kilometers on it, am I right?
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm approaching seventy-six up. And they went covered.
And they wouldn't cover it. I was not, I'm not impressed because a compressor, uh, it was the compressor is is basically that the cost, it was fifteen hundred dollars for the compressor.
No.
And, um, they wouldn't cover it, they wouldn't cover it under warranty. Um, the only thing that, uh, they did have to order it in, so it obviously is not a part. That goes because they had, uh, the, they had to wait for a couple of days for the the part to come, it wasn't a part they had on the shelf, but.
Goes, that's right.
Yeah. So, my question is then, what is, you had seven some thousand, is it sixty?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's correct, sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Okay. It could have been a little, but anyway, cause we've stopped quite a bit of business there guys, a lot of free years.
That's right.
It is what it is, just a question.
Counselor Penn?
I'm wondering if we don't write a letter to Chrysler themselves and, uh, show them the mileage and. Trying to get some payment back from them. I know sometimes that works, but, uh.
Yep.
If a dealership won't warranty, then sometimes the company will.
So, I thought it was sixty thousand, but I didn't know how many kilometers on it because I know it, well, to say for any. Okay.
And and it's definitely not the years, because like you say, it's only two, three, four, so.
Yeah.
And hasn't hasn't been used that much.
Counselor Hendricks?
Uh, just one more, um, for the roads department. I see we've got twenty-seven hundred for signs, that's a lot of road signs, or is that a bigger sign?
Um, a lot of that, I'll be honest with you, a lot of that is for the construction that we're gonna be doing down on walkers. We bought, uh, a large amount of construction, uh, barrels or, and scotchmen or two. Um, we we realized we only had thirty barrels to mark the side of the road and to do, uh, to do, uh, seven kilometers of road, thirty barrels just not gonna cut. So, we ended up ordering a large number of barrels. And, um, I looked into renting the barrels, um, and if it took us, uh, a couple of months to do the construction, we'd end up paying more for the rental.
Call you money.
Than the buying of barrels, so, um, it's a little overboard on the number of barrels we have now, but we needed it.
Deputy Mr. Stockman?
And, uh, you're replacing some of the the sign posts too with the wooden posts or?
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, um, we found the, uh, the half-load signs, um, are now a large, larger sign. And on the steel posts, they've been, uh, through the wind, they've been bending like crazy and and distorting on us. So, uh, I asked the, uh, the crews to mark any of the signs that are are bending, bent, um, do to fold it over. And we're gonna replace them with, uh, four-by-fours. Uh, they they don't, they break before they pan, so. But and and there's some, I didn't, half-loads, uh, stop aheads, uh, any of the larger signs are showing the steel just, it's not cutting, so.
And now that you have the trailer, you've got lots of room to put the all those barrels on.
No, I'm not, yeah.
So, those farm, of course, you ordered, especially as you go to, uh, do you have to order through the department highways or?
No, we just, uh.
You just go to our local.
Yeah, priced, uh, the local suppliers and whoever was, uh, the best deal at the time, that's that's where we got them.
Okay.
There is a an upgrade on a five-by-five, but, uh, I think right now the county's still using four-by-fours and the and the highways are still using.
We just treated four-by-four.
Just to treat it four-by-four.
Yep. No, I didn't know whether it was, uh, related to a highway or roads you had to go through the government or rules or.
Own or rules or.
You can, you know, because I mean, sometimes it makes quite a difference every time you. So, if you just were your local dealer, you pay the same as I do. Okay, that's quite reasonable.
Is there any other questions on the accounts? So, we have a motion to resolve the council approved the account listings for the period May thirty first to June thirteenth, twenty eighteen. In the amount of four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents as presented.
Yeah, move.
Counsel Sanders and Counsel McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's buried.
Number two is the vacancy unit rebate stakeholder and public input survey. I provided council with some information. Their press release from the county of Middlesex, as well as a copy of the survey that is posted, uh, and available on the county website and soon to be on our township website. Um, what is happening is, is the vacant unit rebate program was introduced in two thousand and one. And in the last year, the province has opter offered municipalities to opt out of the program. Unfortunately, we're part of the county program, so all of the municipalities in the county have to opt out of it as well. So, they are looking to get public feedback. It is a requirement to opt out of the program that you obtain public feedback from as many avenues as possible. So, it's just to keep council aware of what is going on at the county level and that that program could possibly be discontinued this year.
Okay.
And you did say it was posted on our website as well.
It will be, yes. It's on the county website and all the other municipalities as well.
Any other questions at all? None, uh, motion to resolve that council accepts the vacancy unit rebate stakeholder holders and public input survey report as presented by the CIO Treasurer. Counsel Penn and Counsel Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's buried.
The next report is the, um, corrugated steel pipe tender seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, which, uh, left on your desk this evening. The tenders were issued on Wednesday, June thirteenth and closed today at three P A M. We received three tenders back. Uh, the first one was from Atlantic Industries Limited in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents plus H S T. E S Hubble, eleven thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixteen cents plus H S T. And Armtech, eleven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and twelve cents plus H S T. The public works manager has reviewed the, uh, tenders estimated and is satisfied that the lowest tender from Atlantic Industries Limited be accepted.
Not a lot, move. Moved by Counsel Sanders and seconded by Counsel McKinnon. Any discussion at all? All those in.
Oh, yep. Yes, have we, we've dealt with this before, right?
Yep, they're, they're, all three of our.
Is it local?
Um. The local is Hubble.
Yeah.
They're the closest.
Yeah, and, uh, we had that before.
Dealt with them a lot more, but no, Atlantic and Armtech is a little further apart, they're a little further away, but they're industry-wide, they supply and. It is what it is.
Yep.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's buried.
The next report is just a simple financial report which shows the status of the tax collection and the payroll report for the month of May, and it was also left on your desk this evening.
Counsel McKinnon?
Just a, uh, comment, like, um. The the township here is doing a really good job at collecting taxes because the ministry tracks your outstanding taxes. And they're willing to accept ten to twelve percent, so when we're looking at minus five and minus four, you're doing a good job.
Okay, is there any questions at all for, uh, quarter of the payroll? Um, okay, a motion to resolve that council accepts the financial report including the May twenty eighteen payroll as presented by the CIO Treasurer. Deputy Mr. Stockman and Counsel Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposing and that's. Anything else, Kathy? Is there any questions at all for Kathy?
Oh, yeah, I do, the ball mine looked good.
Thank you. I give, um, Jeff, Public Works Manager Jeff, a lot of credit, they, um, I gave them what I thought should be done and they did a lot more than what I expected, so.
Yeah, you guys did some job. I went to the ball mine twice in purpose, just listen to these guys, they said, no, listen, you guys worried all for nothing. Well, I got one coming, says you shouldn't have to tell a guy to cut the grass a week before the tournament, that's very true. But, uh, it turned out they looked excellent.
Thank you.
Very well done, and the bleachers looked great.
I gave credit to, uh, to, uh, a couple of the guys, uh, that I said, take it by the, move by the horns and just get her done, so.
Counsel Hendricks?
Uh, and the, uh, very many people were very happy on Thursday night because last year we were scrubbing. And this year it was like, wow, we can just sit down and have a beer.
Oh, one, one, one day I had two people that had complained regarding the cement in the old pavilion. Like it's starting to, and a couple of kids tripped, but I guess that does happen, but I mean, it's getting a bit uneven. So, maybe it's something that we might have to look at someday.
Maybe shave it off.
Yeah, I don't know, it's.
Shave the shovels off and kinda double-tail it?
Right, I don't know how to, yeah.
Depends how it moves in the wind.
Yeah, but it's a start to.
Amps will do it.
Mr. Mayor, there's also other signs of some other building, uh, needs.
Some of the jingles are starting to maybe be missing from one of the pavilions.
Yeah, that was the old, I don't know, it's been there quite a while. Anyway, once, uh, Kathy gets this project underway, we can do shingles, we can do cement, we can do a lot of things.
That's true. We're on to other business now, I guess, so. Anything else for other business? Deputy Mr. Stockman?
Uh, when Chris Trainey was here, he said, uh, eighty-one was gonna be the first thing on their docket this year.
What?
It was, they constructed, they reconstructed. Well, they took the bridge. The four oh two bridges done, that's.
That's quite a time in three years. And that's not the county.
Is he complaining or is he, uh, bringing up a poll?
He's complaining.
Oh, okay.
He's, yeah, he's complaining.
No, I just wondered whether he was good or bad.
Just a second, I'll tell you.
Well, the corner with Eggermont is almost safe. There's still people trying to get off.
Well, I, we, we're hearing from the delegation.
Yeah. Hmm.
Uh, and Chris Trainey sat, you know, there last fall.
Yep.
And said it's gonna be the first thing that gets done this year.
I asked the question, so I I just, if, I can ask again, but.
You can just take it back, those councils can, you know, concern.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, 'cause it's not the only other report, uh, we don't get update reports on when construction and all that stuff's gonna happen. The only thing that I was thinking it could have been on there is the road closures, but it's not gonna be closed.
No.
Um, the only one that's closed, that's going to be closed is Highway, uh, well, Center Road, which is up between Townsend Line and Narren Road. And that's.
That's been.
That's been closed from the, yeah, since the fourteenth until probably July twenty-seventh. And the other one that will likely, that could affect anybody in the township would be the tenth Kilbrook Drive between Care Doc Street to Melbourne Road. And that's from, uh, there's specific dates now, but sometime in June till August. Yeah.
Are you gonna start construction on that this year?
Yeah.
Are they?
Yeah, they won't be fully completed, they're looking at certain blocks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it's all this stuff.
So, they think they're gonna start till next year, they did the tree cutting out, then they were gonna leave it till next year to do the.
That's massive.
Yeah.
Well, that's a big job.
It's a really big job.
Yeah. Huge, and it needs it.
Some of the trunks or the trees are humongous that they already dis.
Oh, and they got a lot left to done, but it's still a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
And it needs it.
Mm-hmm, sure did.
And and how many of those trees were planted by the by the conservation authority or the county?
Most of them.
Counselor Penn?
I wonder if when, um, staff are looking at the report that, uh, Deputy Mayor Stokeman asked for. If, um, they could also include an asphalt continuous lay instead of sidewalk to to price it out.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, just a quick update from, uh, County Council. Uh, one thing you've likely seen in the London Free Press or in the news or anything like that is the result of the Middlesex London Health Unit. Um, move, um, from Fifty King to City Plaza and the Superior's court decision. Uh, so that decision was, uh, made saying that, um, County Council was kind of, kind of in the wrong, is what they were saying. Uh, um, saying withholding consent or not, saying that they didn't need consent on that specific, um, move itself. Um, but then the thing is, is that at the end of the day, there's still, um, the county is still. In a position of either providing consent or not and asking those questions. Uh, so, uh, the the nice part is that in the future, there will be, there's now an outline from the Superior Report that says that, you know, consent still needs to be given. And, um, it's just in this one case being that the county was landlord at Fifty King as to why the consent was not needed for this time. So, that was a unique situation altogether, um, so they, uh, they'll be moving, I'm not sure when. And, uh, County Council have to make a decision what the long-term plan will be for Fifty King once, uh, once they're gone, so.
Isn't that that big, uh, eleven-story twisted tower?
Uh, no, so that, uh, that photo that you, that's just a concept of what is, could be approved, that's kind of the footprint of what is allowed to be there. Yeah, so that's, uh, so the London City Council or London City Planning Board requested to see a concept of what would be there. Kind of the maximum height width and everything, so that's why there's that concept of of. Uh, some other things, uh, Counselor, uh, Anna DeVit, uh, she is, um, County Council endorsed her nomination for the AMO board. So, if anybody is going to AMO, is anybody going to AMO? No, okay, so, uh, just so you know that she is running, uh, for the, uh, county caucus, so hopefully she'll get that nomination. Uh, a report that is an interesting one that was on our last meeting was the Glendon Drive environmental assessment. So, if you're driving down Glendon between the four oh two, um, until the the bridge there at Kilworth. There is some signs along there, um, asking people for a public input and there was, uh, a long period of, uh, public, uh, consultation with that. And in the report, it kind of outlines what that assessment turned, uh, out to be and it's looking, um, nothing is, the the assessment is now approved. But there's nothing in the budgets right now for County Council as to when that's all gonna get done and it'll take, uh, it'll take time and take years to to do. Cause there's a lot of work that's planned to be there, uh, but it's, um, from the, uh, four oh two, uh, to the intersection there at, what is it? Glendon and Camoka, uh, it'd be a three-lane road and then with a roundabout there. And then beyond that would be a four-lane road with the Center Line Tree Boulevard. And then in those two spaces, uh, there's two intersections there, uh, and they're lighted, uh, intersections. That would always be green until there'd be a car coming up, so then it was, you know, continuous traffic. And then what, uh, people like to call the five corners intersection there, that and Glendon and I'm not sure what the road is, um, that's also.
Old Street.
Yes, uh, it's also looking to be, uh, uh, a roundabout as well with the the one road, uh, the fifth road that goes into that intersection.
Roundabout.
Um, being culled, culled the socked off and then entering onto Glendon, uh, further towards the, uh, to Camoka. And then narrowing back down to three lanes to the bridge. And, uh, the main concern from council is when that bridge in Kilworth would be expanded or looked at. Uh, but the thing is, is that's a, that'd be a city of London and county project.
Be an expansion, uh, which.
So.
That's a big one.
Yeah, so it could, it's, it still goes back and follow next back down to the two lanes, but. So, there's a lot of work put towards that and, um, I'd recommend, so the next, the the last meeting, which was June twelfth, it's on there. So, it's quite interesting to to see kind of what the plan is.
That would be right up in the three face.
Still nothing for the north of London though.
For?
For moving traffic in any amount. Like if you.
Yeah.
Hatchet Park Road is probably one of the worst.
The cross street.
I I don't know if it made CA's worst roads, but it should have.
Yeah. Uh, speaking of that road though, on Eggermont here, there will be, uh, lights being put in at, um, Elderton and Eggermont. So, that's gonna be happening in the fall. Yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of accidents at that point.
Yeah, it's a very awkward intersection. Um, and that's kind of the, uh, the main ones there, other than the. There was the, uh, annual accessibility status report, uh, which is obviously an annual thing, um, and as you heard from, what's his name? That there's, uh, we have a new accessibility coordinator now, um, so I can't remember what her name is.
He is senior coordinator.
Yeah, yes, but I was saying that, what's her name, the the previous A O D A person, um, yeah, Jen, she, uh. Yeah, yes, but I was saying that, what's her name, the the previous A O D A person, um, yeah, Jen, she uh, decided. Uh, she got a new uh, job elsewhere, so that's why we have uh, Sam McFarlane there now. So, and that's pretty well everything that happened. There's a few other things, but that's the main oversight, so.
Good.
Is there anything else for other business, any questions, Council Hendricks?
Yeah, I forgot to bring it up last meeting, uh, a few of us got an email from a resident of, I'm assuming it was Curvitt. Because she said the village, I'm just wondering if that's been dealt with by staff or?
We have received a f- a formal complaint, did all the complaints before, um, we do have a process complaint for the complaint.
Yes.
So we do have a formal complaint now and we will do some investigation to take appropriate action.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just so, you can say this, this is not.
It was a, it's a parking concern, um, on Havelock Street, um, vehicles being parked on the road and left overnight.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, possibly leaving contamination on the street itself. So we are going to do some investigation and come back to council with some information and let you know what options there are available.
So is there anything else for other business? Not moving to bylaws? Uh, the first one is resolved that the first and second reading be given to bylaw number thirty-three, two thousand and eighteen, and that's the zoning bylaw amendment. Um, and that the bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk. Council Sanders and Deputy Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and carried. And the last one's resolved that all three readings be given to bylaw number thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, and that's the information technology agreement. Uh, bylaw number thirty-two, two thousand and eighteen, we adopt the two thousand and eighteen tax rate. And thirty-four, two thousand and eighteen, confirm council proceedings and the bylaws be signed with the mayor and clerk and a corporate seal be attached. Councilor McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. If there's nothing else, a motion to resolve that the meeting be adjourned at eight thirty-two P M. Council Sanders and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and carried.